All right, everyone. Good evening and welcome to this work session of the Tiger Twelton School Board. And we will call this meeting to order at 5:00 p.m. So this is our third session regarding sort of this, this work around a potential, you know, we've, we've gone through sort of all the strands of new policy. You know, the districts work around the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, and then sort of ways that we can refer back to these other documents in already sort of crafted policy. And so what we were kind of tasked with this evening is, after our last session, really taking a good look at a possibility of creating sort of an Acts of Aggression policy, which we do not have one. So there's threats of violence and aggression, and, but nothing, and this is statewide. There is no policy around acts of violence or aggression. And so, you know, we looked at surrounding districts, and there, this is not something that, that schools and districts have at this point. So we get to be, kind of yet again, sort of the, the frontrunner of some of this work. So because we only have an hour, and that goes really fast, Director Zershmeed and I sort of tooled with making a framework. So instead of just starting with a blank piece of paper and, and trying to kind of craft something, we really just did sort of the teacher scaffolding version of, we defined a couple of terms, we put in, here's what we might want to talk about here. And so that's what I have a printed out version for all of us to take a look at. None of this is written in stone, or policy, or anything. This was just sort of a place for us to start so that we could make the most of the hour that we have together. And so that's kind of, I think, our charge for tonight. And again, crossing out, underlining, redoing, this is just going to give us a framework for sort of what this could potentially look like. That, and that was kind of a way that I, I could help learn and kind of get my head wrapped around this a little bit. And so at that, you know, and we'll kind of talk about next steps a little bit. You want to do that now?
No.
Okay. And so, you know, one thing, I think, part of the next steps piece is, once this is completed, this will be sort of a rough draft of what a policy could look like, right? It's going to have all of our input in it. And so for the board's work, I would like to appoint a couple of the people to then take all of our work tonight, and then use that to kind of draft our first draft. And so Director Zershmeed, Director Miles, if I, if you would be willing, because of your extensive policy work and OSBA work, I would love for you to, once we have this kind of evening wrapped up, to kind of take some of that and start sort of forming all of our ideas into policy. Okay?
Did you say next steps then at that point?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, thank you, Chair, and I'm going to say thank you to the board for the direction that you are taking relative to crafting new policy that I think not only will be impactful for this district, but certainly impactful across the state. With that said, what I also appreciate and what ask for is that we then have a period of time with our community for comment, and opportunity for them to come together and take a look at your first set of thinking, and much as we have done with the Student Success Act, with the strategic plan, with our annual budget, and with the integrated guidance that we hear from all constituencies. I want to start first with our teachers, relative to the fact that within their contract that we have negotiated and settled on a development of a behavior committee, that this is absolutely perfect work for them, so that they would have the opportunity to dig into the first draft and provide feedback, ask questions, but more importantly, help us to see where the gaps are relative to, to policy and the impacts on teachers. Additionally, I would, would offer a slight adjustment to the timeline that we had originally proposed, which was a first read of October, of November 6th, and a second read by November 2nd. I'm asking for your consideration of extending that timeline into December, so that there is opportunity for, again, a second opportunity or another opportunity in, in addition to the Behavior Committee, that teachers, what, teachers, classified staff, administrators, students, and parents would come together for a session to take a look at the policy, provide their feedback, much like we did with the strategic plan, which is, this is what we're thinking, you know, what, what pieces do you give a thumbs up to, what pieces do you have concerns about, where are the gaps, and what else needs to be done to strengthen that policy, and take that, all of that input. That would then come forward back to this, to Directors Zershmeed and Miles, and then given that be passed to the Board's Policy Committee, in which Director Miles, you and Director Weston sit and provide input and finish to a first read draft, along with Director Len Reed as part of our policy, that would then be prepared for the 20th rather than the 6th. And then between the 20th and December, I believe it is 11th, which is our next board meeting, that there be another avenue for input relative to how that input from the first session with teachers, students, parents, classified staff, were, was crafted, and then any other adjustments that need to be made, and then get it ready for a second read in December, at December 11th. So that is, I'm asking for your consideration if we can do that. I think that all of that input is critical to a successful policy. The second request that I would have for you is consideration in this first draft, thinking about how teachers are intentionally called out and included relative to when student behaviors directly impact their classrooms and their ability to teach others, that there is very clear or clarity given as to information potentially, or, you know, coming alongside as part of the process to take a look at student behaviors, and when a student really is ready to return to a classroom, or when there are times when we need to continue to work with a student before return to classroom. But whatever that is for all of you, as you're, as you're thinking about that, I want us to hold our teachers and our classified staff that work with our students and are on the front lines first and foremost in our thoughts, as well as the students that, that they teach so very well on a daily basis. So thank you for that.
So before we kind of dive into the kind of work tonight, any thoughts or questions or clarifications regarding the process?
I have just one. So Director Miles and I are going to take tonight's conversation and synthesize a rough draft. When is that rough draft due? What's our, what's our homework date?
I think it's, it's, you know, if it could be, be ready somewhere around the week of the 6th. You know, again, and, you know, allowing your colleagues here also to have a look at it. But I think, I don't want any surprises for anyone. We, you know, we don't, we, we work to, to the emphasis of no surprises. And so that way, then we could set a date for the, the larger community process, whereas Director Kinch is right here. Director Kinch, relative to the Behavior Committee, once we've had this opportunity this evening, we would want to activate, you know, reach out, and I know that that is your work with the, with the Behavior Committee in convening them, so that they are aware and ready to receive this, the copy from the, from the board as well.
Yes, so we have two meetings already on the schedule, one for next week.
Okay.
On a Monday, when you and I are going to give them an update and get some feedback.
Perfect, yep.
And then I believe the other meeting is on November 14th.
All right. So we may want to talk with them about perhaps moving that, moving that forward, because I think what's critical is that we are, you know, we are, we are in full support of that language within the contract. We want to give teachers that primacy of seat and input, and so moving that up, I think, would be where we would want to have the conversation.
And one kind of district question, would there be a decent chunk of the matrices that could be ready when it's time for those sort of constituent conversations and listening sessions, so they can, so when the community comes in to kind of look at our policy work and to better help the, I think, everyone understand, here's what we put in policy and why, and the bulk of the if and then stuff is in that student handbook? Would there be a decent amount of those, you know, the matrix pieces that would be done by then, so that they could really have a, a good understanding of, of what those will look like?
So by what date?
Probably that same, the week of the 6th.
Yeah, that's a pretty quick turnaround. So we did show, we did a work group with our administrators. Unfortunately, some of it got cut, cut short. And remember, the matrices was a draft, was two people coming up with an idea, and so there is more work to be done with administrators who live this every day, and so they had some feedback about certain specific behaviors and what would be, you know, the severity range, for example. And so to do it well, I think what we had just talked about was having them come back in, but remember, there's like 20 behaviors?
Yeah.
And really doing a fine, going through it with a fine-tooth comb to...
So even seeing maybe a couple, so there can be a really good visual, even the one that you showed us, and you know, something so that
Yes, we could have an example.
When the community comes in, they can then have that visual, this is what we will see for all of those behaviors in the handbook. I help, I think will help folks understand this, you know, again, we have somewhat broad policy, but it, it refers to the specific handbook work, and they can see the plan.
An example, yes, for sure. We can definitely have an example. We have a couple of behaviors that will explain the framework and the continuum.
I think that would be great.
And how an administrator would use it.
Yes, perfect. All right.
Just a clarifying question. So it looks like this would be in addition to the matrix? The, well, the code XXX, I mean, we don't have a reference yet. The Acts of Aggression AR?
So this is a policy. This is, yeah.
Right, so the idea is to have this, and then we'll also have the matrix, so we'll just need to make sure that those don't conflict?
Right, so kind of what we outlined last week was those three prongs. So we want to make sure that the Student Code of Conduct refers back to the Student Handbook, which is where all the matrices will be. Then we kind of recognize that while we had a threats of violence and aggression policy, there really wasn't one for acts of aggression. And so that's when we decided to create something that then, again, like we used all of the aggression versus violence terms that Director Kinch shared with us last week. So then this will also refer back to that Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, where they, you know, so they, those will overlay and work together. Yep. All right. So I think with that, and anyone that wants to kind of start the conversation, I think we can just kind of go through this. Yes.
So I just want to make sure that everybody's had a chance to read through the framework before we...
We can take a moment.
So I'm not sure how this will work with any kind of matrix of consequences, because it doesn't have consequences in here, and so I'm wondering if...
This would be, so that's going to, the matrices will come off of this. They'll be essentially the ARs that go with this. This is the policy that is on top, is the umbrella for it, just like our Acts of Violence is on top of it, just like our Student Conduct Policy is on top of it. The Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook will essentially be the AR for all of those bits and pieces. So there will be, in the Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook, there will be consequences based on, you know, those matrices that Director Kinch was talking about.
And again, this is just that framework. So again, why do we have the policy? Do we, or should we define aggression versus, you know, aggression versus violence? How do we enforce the policy? How do we report? What are the consequences? So those are all pieces that we just haven't written yet, but kind of, again, in a way to sort of organize our time and kind of think about the why and the how of, of a policy like this, understanding that, you know, aggression is very different than violence after, you know, last meeting, when it was, you know, really clearly defined.
Right.
And, and kind of keeping that in front of mind. And then also, again, like you said, all of these will refer back to that handbook that will have, again, the little charts that we saw.
So this will kind of cover it twice. So we'll have this AR on...
This is not an AR.
Can I just?
This is a policy, not an AR. They're two different things. I'll make sure you've got that, because it's different. But go ahead.
So this policy, which is not an AR, will, will work in conjunction with the handbook. So this, I mean, it feels a little redundant to have, if we refer to the handbook, and then we also have this Acts of Aggression policy, we'll, but we could have the consequences in both, or it would refer. I'm just not sure the intent, but I, I...
Well, I, I think after last week, the intent was something like this didn't exist, and for the community to understand, while we have the threats of these things, there hasn't been an act. And so there could be that overarching umbrella policy around, you know, denouncing school violence, which is separate than Code of Conduct, which is separate than Threats of Violence. And so, again, being able to here define what those things are, how that is enforced, and then again, referring, just like we will in probably several policies, referring consistently back to the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, where all the, like, the meat of all the specifics will be living. So this won't have all of those charts attached. This will be that overarching policy that says, we're writing this policy and the way that we're enforcing that, and integrating that into our, our district and our, at the school level is through the stuff in the handbook.
So should we have this policy refer to the handbook, or vice versa? What's, what does everyone think?
Policy usually refers to the, the handbook or the AR. So in this case, the policy will refer to the handbook, which is acting as the AR. And I wanted to just, yeah, in both ways, it's true. And I wanted to just call out, because I realize that Director Miles and I have a very clear sense of what policy looks like laid out, but the shorthands that, that I've used as I sketched this out, this framework, might not be obvious to everybody else. So in policy, anything that's in square brackets is stuff that I'm assuming you're going to take out. So it's just there for your information. So all of that stuff that's in square brackets, that's in italics, is just sort of helping to structure the document, so that you know what sort of thing would be appropriate to come here. So it starts with a belief statement, because most policy starts with a belief statement. So between us, Chair Irvin and I came up with a couple of sentences that sort of sound like a belief statement. And then we thought the next best thing to do would be to define what we mean by aggression versus violence, to what Director Kinch was talking about. So started doing that, but I didn't want to make the definition, so I just put in the placeholder definition here. And then pulling directly from what Director Kinch shared last time, we came up with examples of aggression, because it's always useful to have some examples, so people have a concrete idea of what we're talking about. And then the rest of it is very much language that was pulled from JHC, which is the one on violence, and we just kind of, well...
JFCM kind of pulls some of that, and...
So that's where Chair just kind of took it and changed the language a little bit to move it less from acts of, or threats of violence, and more to acts of aggression. So if you look, Director Weston, at halfway down the second page, we're in brackets and italics, it says, "consequences of breaking this policy," and then it's in, in square brackets, "reference to the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook." That's my assumption, that was my contribution of, that's what we could have. The other thing we could also have is the current language from JFCM, the Threats of Violence, of this sort of thing. So that's kind of how we got this framework put together. It's just a starting point for us to have the conversation about, what do we want that language we're going to fill in to look like? What do we want that definition to be? I think is going to be an important part. And then how do we word the consequences? And then at the very bottom, you'll see cross-references to laws and policy. Almost every policy has those cross-references, and so that's where I put Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook and Policy JFC, and I'm sure there'll be other policies that will also be cross-referenced.
Yeah.
But it was just a starting point.
Do we want to start by, well, any thoughts, questions, before I ask my next question?
Um, I just wanted a little bit of clarification on the sentence, "A referral to law enforcement authorities shall be made for any infraction."
Oh, my edit...
And then like, only half of it is crossed out?
Well, because my, my edit, I, I added before, or thought that I had before I printed, which was, hold on, I'll get to that in a second, but yes, that's a complete sentence once I find my...
Okay, okay. I was just making sure, because I was not sure what that...
Yes, good eye.
All right.
What I added, because I wasn't really sure, "So a referral to law enforcement authorities shall be made for any infraction that results in a violation of state or federal law and board policy." Okay. And I can share out a, a draft of this with that change, so I appreciate that. So do we want to start at the beginning with the belief statement and kind of tool, I mean, unless someone has a, a place that they definitively want to start that's not at the beginning, but I think to Director Zershmeed's point, sort of, our why, and then the sort of definitions piece are going to be critical to the rest of the framework, so. You may wish to read that in next place. Okay. Oh, yes, okay. I'll go ahead and read that, since it's not posted. "The board is committed to promoting healthy relationships in a safe learning environment and denounces school violence. To this end, student acts of aggression shall not be tolerated on district property or at activities under the jurisdiction of the district, or district-sponsored activities." So that's the rough, the rough go of it. So thoughts, changes, strikeouts, additions?
Well, because violence and aggression are defined differently, which I'm not sure is necessary, but in any case, is that an OR, is that an Oregon law definition we're using?
Where did that come? Yeah, let Director...
Oh, sorry. That comes from the research and work, and I'm blanking on his name right now, of where our threat assessment process comes from in the state of Oregon, started in Salem, and I can get the name for you. But it's important when we are looking at threats to school that we understand what is a threat of violence versus aggression. So that's where it comes from.
And we do have the Threats of Violence policy, which is specific to state law.
Right, I'm aware of that. So, so because we have both of them, it says, "To this end, student acts of aggression should not be tolerated." Theoretically, we should add aggression and/or violence, because we've split them out, so that means we have to mention them both?
So I think one question to have is, we specifically, last week kind of talked about, because most of, and I think you're right, we could do also and, I think after last week's work session, kind of thinking about the majority of what we are seeing are those acts of aggression, being really thoughtful about centering our policy around that, and then for that purpose, defining what aggression is and what violence is. And I, and I kind of see the, the other side of that coin, saying like, well then, we don't have a policy around acts of violence. And so certainly, we can think about making this acts of aggression and/or violence, and then being really clear about, you know, again, that definition of which is which, because I think that's, those are terms that oftentimes are, seem interchangeable, and we wanted to be really thoughtful about what is considered aggression versus violence.
But we definitely wouldn't want to send in a message that one, that the higher-level acts wouldn't, would be tolerated by omitting it. That's just my thinking.
Yeah.
So I'm looking at what we looked at last time, and what we have in our synergy, and how we, and it talks about physical altercation, assault, and fighting, because I'm thinking of this as a continuum. I agree, like, acts of aggression and violence, because we, that's what we're talking about. And then I'm thinking of the other end of the spectrum of two students that are playing basketball and start pushing and shoving. According to this, it would be an act of aggression, and then all the things would follow, and yes, there should be a consequence, but I don't think that's what you're talking about. You're talking about the physical assaults in the hallway. So trying to figure out how to describe that continuum, and, and when it is a point where there's a point where it says, "Contact the superintendent immediately," and I probably aren't going to contact her every time there's something physical. So where is that line that it becomes that significant of aggression? Does that make sense?
Yeah. So I'm wondering then, and because it's policy, and sometimes, and this is a reason why I think policy is sometimes less specific, maybe, well, I think it's important to define these, what could be defined, and there are certainly a bunch more, or maybe we don't, I think we need to define it. But I'm just wondering if we make it less specific here, then it automatically would bump to referring to the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, where all of those specifics are. So I'm not sure where in this to make it less specific, but that might be the way that we are really thoughtful around the continuum.
Yeah, I agree. Chair Irvin, I think this doesn't make sense until we get to the metrics, matrix, and so, but I think the belief statement still makes sense, so we could make that, I'm not sure how much we want to focus on the definitions, but just say, any acts of aggression, violence, we could throw in some more ways to define, shall not be tolerated, and then generally refer to the matrix, because, or two kids that push each other over a ball, not tolerated, no, that's not acceptable, but that's, the consequence is going to be quite different than someone pulls a knife on someone else, right? So it doesn't mean we're tolerating and condoning the behavior, but it really just needs to go to the ma, a matrix-type thing, where we can get into what kind of consequences should be expected.
Yeah. So we could do something like, "The board is committed to promoting a safe learning environment," then denounces school violence, and then, "To this end, the board authorizes the superintendent to establish a handbook, a rubric of showing offenses and consequences across a range of transgressions."
The continuum of behaviors, or the continuum of...
Something like that. Does that make more sense as a, as a starter?
I think maybe something like that, but I'm not sure I would put how it's determined, because if it's referring to the handbook, and then this board is, or group is working on the handbook, then I'm not sure it should
Yeah.
Quite be worded that way.
Yeah, it is a way of saying, the superintendent's going to make the rules without saying she's going to write the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. We've done that a number of times.
Or just refer to the handbook.
So then you're suggesting we don't define aggression versus violence? Do you want to keep in the examples, just so the people have an idea of what that continuum looks like? Or is that not useful?
I'm not sure. I think we could also think about the matrix and then reproduce it here.
Oh, but we're not, but that's the piece that's going to be the, like, nuts and bolts that will kind of only live in the handbook, not, I mean, I think having some examples of aggression versus violence, kind of like, but not limited to, which is in here, just so, and again, this is sort of under the, this umbrella of an acts of aggression or violence policy, so.
We could just say, "Denounces school violence of any kind, this will be further defined, and the consequences delineated in the student handbook, which you can find out," and then we just go work on that.
So I think I, I agree that policy is necessarily broad, and ARs and handbooks need to be the the details piece, which we don't get into the tiny strategies. we don't get into the tiny strategies. Um, and I think it's really important that this refer to the handbook, and that the handbook refer to this. As I'm looking at this, though, I think if I'm, you know, just looking through, uh, like, the lens of a community member who's going to policy first, because they don't have the handbook, and that they're not going there, I would want to see what the district stance is, what the board stance is on acts of aggression and violence. And so I think that having that, those, um, examples of is actually really important in this, in this policy. I wouldn't want to see that removed, because that helps me, as even as I'm reading this determinate, like, "Oh, okay, well, these are the kinds of things that fall into this bucket. These are the kinds of things that are more serious." We're still not making promises that something is going to fit into teeny tiny boxes. Um, and it also says, "Include but are not limited to." And so I think, I think we're still meeting that goal of trying to give some idea of, "This is the sphere over here, this is the sphere over here." And then, um, and then ensuring that we are, you know, giving the appropriate authority to our superintendent and her team to define what those measures are. But that, it be clear in policy, what do we mean by this?
Maybe it might be useful to, like, as I know you're saying about pushing, could that could happen on a playground, maybe get rid of some of the things that are a little bit ambiguous, like, you know, "Could this happen here?" And like, things like throwing objects, fighting, sexual coercion, like, that should never happen on a playground, and if it happens, it will violate this policy. So maybe being less specific on what examples could be, because I feel like maybe even just like six people get the idea that it's not, that it's not like binding us and kind of creating those.
That's actually a really good point, and we do have policy already on all manner of sexual coercion, so maybe we can just drop that one, because it's covered under a different policy.
And I, oh, go. I like the idea of defining it always, particularly in my world where we, we define violence versus aggression, and, you know, hear people interchanging them. And, um, but I, I think you could just use it to do it a little differently than this, maybe. And some of your policies, it says, "The board recognizes," for example, I for, I don't know which one, but something related to discipline and conduct. There's a part about recognizing that elementary school students would be different. Um, a kindergarten doing something that a eighth grader does is going to be very different and have very different consequences. And recognizing that a kindergartner might throw a rock or a stick, but that intention is going to be different than the eighth grader that might do that. So I, I'll try to find which, which one it is, but it talks about the board recognizing the difference of developmental levels. And I, I think it's possible to even to further define the continuum of aggression also, or maybe just recognize that some situations are going to be very different than others. And what I think the community is asking for is for us to be more consistent about that line when it's, "Stop, this is serious, we have to do something about this." And, you know, where is that line? It seems to be what we're struggling with.
So at the last meeting, you had a really, I, I peeked at your screen, and you had a really good definition of aggression and violence. If you could maybe send that by email to me and Director Miles, and then we can fold this in, not as a harsh, hard and fast definition, but just sort of a, "A board believes the continuum of aggression to violence looks like this to this."
And maybe we, we use some of that language around it, this is a continuum. And also, what we know that the, once the handbook is really clear, and, and that work is currently being done, and we know that. But it also, again, has both the, you know, the minor versus major, but also the amount of times. So there's a lot of context built into, you know, it's not like it's listed in our policy that there was a push, and suddenly it's going to go to the severe, whatever red zone of that, um, of that framework or that continuum. And so I think, again, sort of having those broad definitions, so that it centers people in sort of what the policy is about. And then, again, just like we'll have in, um, the JFC, kind of referring back to this handbook that really has all of those specifics for folks that want to know, "If this happens, then this is the response." And then that empowers administrators and teachers and families to better, I think, to Director Kinch's point, kind of better understand what to do and when that happens.
So if we're going to use definitions, which I, I would support, then I think if we, is there already terminology around the lower-level playground pushing type scenario? That we could use-
That's what she was saying, I think she was going to look for.
Yeah, oh, I didn't realize we had that part too.
Oh. We have some of it in our synergy, and we define it in our handbook, and we have it. It would be nice to align it with, um, what we report to the Oregon Department of Education.
Yes, I agree.
So maybe we don't want to spend more time on that? I think the groups has a general understanding of what we're talking about, the lower level, the violence, and then the aggression. Do we want to talk about some general, um, "These are the kinds of consequences that we would want to empower teachers and administrators for these types of things?" Kind of a, a general-
Yes.
Reflection?
Do we want to look at the quick sentence around the enforcing this policy, just to make sure we hit all the, the pieces before the consequences of breaking? Piece? Well, it's, it's just that little bit. "So the district shall enforce this policy consistently, fairly, and without bias against any student, including a student from a protected class, as identified in O R S 659.850."
And actually, as I'm looking at that, I think that sentence maybe should come last in the policy. Okay, that seems like a, after all of the definitions and the consequences have been described, by the way, we're not going to discriminate.
Okay. So now, oh, go ahead, yes.
Director Zerchmied, just for a point of clarity, by "not discriminate" means that, that no one is above the law, correct? Okay, thank you. I just want to be sure that we're, we're clear about that.
Yeah.
That regardless, if an, if an infraction has happened, consequences will be, will be, um, delivered.
Yes, it says, "We will enforce this policy," which is to say, "Consequences um, on any student who has an infraction, including students from protected classes defined by-"
Thank you for the clarity.
And I'm assuming, Director Kinch, that the only time that this would not be a case is if it were a student on an I E P, when there was a finding that the I E P, that, that the disability did affect their ability to, and so in that case, but that's not what this is talking about here, so.
I have seen policies that, that just included that, though. Um, if this, if the action was a manifestation of a disability as defined and determined by, you know, et cetera, et cetera, then that would be handled through this other mechanism of adjusting the student's placement, reviewing supports, et cetera. I mean, I think having that-
Just have a cross-reference to that policy.
I think having that there is important, because it shows, it makes it clear to whoever's enforcing the policy of what they're supposed to do in that scenario. Because I think if you're silent on it, then it introduces confusion. And if you're confused and uncertain, then you can't do anything, a lot of times, because people aren't sure, and they don't want to do it wrong. So I think if we could include something like that-
Easy peasy.
Via reference, or just a short sentence, or something like that.
Yeah, just a cross-reference to the specialized policy, so that if it's, if it is a manifestation of a disability, then-
Well, I would just have a sentence about that, and then refer-
It's so, I, I don't think we could do it in one sentence, which is why I think a cross-reference to the policy that is a Mongo huge policy about how you deal with discipline of students with special needs.
Or just like a statement of intent, that if it's not a manifestation, if it is, go do all this, and refer.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's all in that policy, so we don't need to do-
Um, so then, okay, we'll add, we'll move enforcing to the end. So then the next sort of framework piece is the reporting acts of aggression, which takes us to the second page in my fragment. Um, so I will read this out, since it has not been posted. So currently, we have, "Students shall be instructed of the responsibility to inform a district staff member regarding any information or knowledge relevant to conduct prohibited by this policy. Parents, guardians, and others will be encouraged to report such information to the district. Staff shall immediately notify an administrator of any act of aggression or violence the staff member has knowledge of or has witnessed. The administrator shall," and I think this is when someone kind of mentioned this, "The administrator shall immediately notify the superintendent or designee of any violation of this policy. All reports will be promptly investigated. Students found in violation of this policy may be subject to discipline up to and exclu- and including expulsion. The building administrator shall notify the parent or guardian of any student in violation of this policy and the disciplinary action imposed. A referral to law enforcement authorities shall be made for any infraction..."
The results.
Uh, the results in violation of state or federal law and board policy. Um, and this probably could use a little tool, tooling, yeah.
So, first comment, um, "Students shall be instructed of their responsibility." Um, I think that's kind of okay, but the, I think that I think that the staff should be responsible first. So I feel like starting off with the students being instructed of their responsibility feels like the students have more responsibility than they should, um, especially considering it could be bullying, or like, a victim of violence. I wouldn't want to put the primary responsibility on the student, maybe-
And this was pulled from the threats of violence cards, which makes sense when it's a threat, so, but for context.
I don't mean to, um, good point, I don't mean to, um, to imply that that was coming off that, because I think this is rough coming from the other thing. But I think maybe the level of responsibility should somewhat match, or the student one should be kind of made less, or shall be encouraged, for example, to inform, because I think depending on the situation, a student might not be feel, feel comfortable. And then, well, maybe we just want to talk about that first.
No, I like your idea, but, so if we soften it, sorry. If we soften it with, "Students are encouraged to inform a district staff member regarding any information." And then, "Parents, guardians are also similarly encouraged to report." And then, "Staff shall immediately notify," "Administrators um, shall immediately notify as appropriate." And go ahead, sorry, Owen, didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, my question is, I am on the side of the, of "Students shall be instructed," and, but if we did take that path, how would we enforce that? Um, and then, would that also be involved in the investigation process? Would students be encouraged to share in the investigation process? Or will it change to instructed? Or is that a different policy? Um, kind of like when sharing information after it's been reported and during the investigation?
Those are really good questions.
Those are really good questions.
I think-
Because in that case, I think it should be instructed, for sure.
And I think, too, part of this is, and this is a, a culture, a district culture piece, is we really do want to, yes, instruct, but also empower, um, our students to be, whether they were part of that act, or witnessed it, or heard that it might happen, whatever the case is, to really do that, which we know students are feeling more and more, you know, willing to do. And so I think there is a piece of that, to your point, that's, like, yes, still have a choice, and I think the piece around the investigation is one that we'll want to kind of think about and consider. But I do- Yes, go. Okay.
Um, so correct me if I'm wrong, but don't we usually instruct all of our students of their responsibility to be an upstander and not a bystander? Or to say, "Stop, turn, walk away." Like, right, there's, um, there's all those things that we do already, where we're instructing them of their responsibility to not partake in the situation and to, uh, notify a trusted adult. So I don't see how this is any different than what we're currently doing.
So you are correct, and at the beginning of every year, we ask, we, not, don't ask, we require our schools to go over the Student Rights and Responsibilities, and it's called Student Rights and Responsibilities for that reason, um, and do a lesson with all the students about what the particular rights and responsibilities are. Um, so it would fit into that nicely. We also, um, your, the bullying and harassment and hazing policy requires students to be able to report if they know something about that. Um, so we have a reporting system in our schools, um, so it should fit in nicely with that.
Yeah, they can, they can access Safe Oregon to do, uh, a, um, anonymous viola- or reporting, right? So it's not like they're putting themselves out there.
I do have a question too, related to the comment that Director, uh, Director Zerchmied said that we would, uh, put at the end, related to, um, "The district shall enforce this policy consistently, fairly, and without bias against any student." And a wondering that I have, and this is just coming from the implementation process of our bias incidents and hate speeches, that when you start instructing, teaching about the spectrum of behavior, you start seeing an increase in reporting and, and so forth. So one of the things that we have noted as well is, when you start seeing, um, that increase in, like, discipline, then you start seeing, um, potential dis- uh, disproportionate, um, outcomes. And so the question that I have is, you know, obviously with the more, um, uh, intensive behaviors, that might be a little bit more objective, because, you know, it's, it's clear. But with the pushing, slapping, I, I, it makes me wonder around, um, again, who reports and who gets reported? And then, so I, I just want to know a little bit more around how that, um, what might show up, uh, in, in infrastructure for either reviewing data, or making sure that there's a process by which you're keeping a pulse on that? I think that, that's just a wondering that I have. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and certainly a conversation that I've had with others, kind of regarding this kind of work, and sort of how, again, the increase in reporting is good, and also the subjective versus objectivity of, of that reporting, and how, what is that process? And I don't know if that is, if we make a statement around our, our ho- hope, because we can't necessarily enforce it in policy, but this is, um, our intention around. And then the, the data and the, the handbook and, and the administrator level is the one that's sort of, kind of seeing that impact?
Yeah, I just, um, just from, uh, various, um, like, you know, insights around different communities and their, their cultural belief around reporting and not. I think that's also something to think about, too, because maybe, um, window perspective, that might be, someone observing it might report it, but if we're talking with inter- intercultural, um, that might be something, so it's just something to consider. Um, but that's just, you know, a part of that conversation.
I do think it's important to have it be well-defined and, and clearly communicated to staff across the board that it's important to implement consistently. So if it's well-defined, then theoretically, the matrix is fair and has consequences that are natural consequences, not punishing just to punish, but something that's a deterrent, but also designed to instruct. And so thinking of it that way, and making sure that everyone understands they are responsible for following up, not just occasionally, but every time, and that it's not the kind of, um, it's not the kind of deterrent that is so severe that it's not instructive. Because if you think about, if it's your kid doing something, and there's escalating fights that are dangerous, you don't want them to not have the deterrent, because it's not safe. Um, if they're not participating in their education, you don't want them to get, to not be followed up with, because they're not going to learn if they're not engaged in the classroom, or they're not present. And so I think, um, we need to make sure it's followed up with, and there's, um, it's important for fairness, and also because the consequences are helping students access their education, and also protect everyone that's, that's there. So I think they're important for the students that might be experiencing consequences, and also for the students that are, that are there trying to participate. I think it's important to, to consider the benefit of, of following up. We wouldn't want our kids to not be held accountable either, but we need to make sure it's fair for everyone.
So am I wondering with that, and again, I don't know, right, how this works into policy, but in our sort of centering equity, like we-
but in our sort of centering equity like we did in our strategic plan work, and kind of that cultural literacy lens and that kind of framework around, I, I think there would potentially be language, but I don't know if it's in the handbook piece or the policy that would really come back to, you know, we talk about the, our school experience, which is besides being safe, right, that's validating, empowering, and just. And we talk about, you know, understanding the barriers, we understand kind of the idea of our climate and culture widget of our wheel, and just kind of thinking if there was some language that we could craft around sort of understanding the, the cultural component of all of these issues, which again, everything is really nuanced and really complex, but we also recognize that that needs to be part of the framework or a lens in which someone is looking through on behalf of both, whether it's the perpetrator or the victim.
Yeah, and I think, I know that my, again, looking at the data from our families and our students, they want to know, and they want to have accountability as well. I think my question here is not necessarily about that, it's more around what is the system going to do for accountability for ensuring that if there are disproportionate outcomes, then how are we going to, and that goes back to, you know, Director Weston talked about, how do we keep a pulse on that and go back and make sure that we're reviewing data, making sure that we're supporting, you know, the, the implementation? Because that's really what this has, consistency of implementation. So if somewhere around here, there's a, some language around as part of the process for improving, you know, the learning environment, there would be, you know, a review. I think that's within our other policies as well, it talks about that system review.
So I would offer to the board for consideration, just as we did with the anti-bias and hate speech policy, where we initially formed the oversight, the EISH Oversight Committee, that then rolled itself up into the Educational Equity Advisory Committee. And we know that we have community members that have also stood up a separate safety consortium that is their opportunity for members from that to also be part of the EEAC, where we're looking at the data and looking at the discipline, both the discipline data and the outcomes as part of the oversight. And so I would offer that for consideration of the board, that rather than multiple separate oversights, that we, we stay consistent within the system relative to the charge of the EEAC.
And in fact, I'm looking at the AR for that ACB AR, and at the end, where it says its functions of this committee is to, potential recommendations to the policy committee to strengthen or improve district policies related to bias incidents or hate speech, we could also just add in aggression and violence there. And then that's part of, if, if that's an appropriate place for that charge to be at that committee, that seems like a fairly easy way to make sure that that's brought into their thought process. Does that sound reasonable?
Maybe say again what exactly that would entail. I thought that committee was moved to the state level, but I might be mixing it up.
It's a state-required committee, so we had to change the name of it, but, so it's no longer the EISH Committee, which is what Tiger Towalton named it when we devised it. And now the state has come up with their framework, and now it's the Educational Equity Advisory Committee, which is charged with certain things. And so I think that's not a required policy, we're allowed to tweak the, the requirement or the, yes.
Can I just say one correction, sorry? We didn't choose to change the name. The committee chose to integrate itself into the-
Fair point, thank you for the correction.
So I, I think something like that is a good idea, because I'm sitting here and I don't have an answer, but I want to, along with our equity lens, thinking about students with disabilities, particularly our little students with disabilities, that if misinterpreted, could potentially be, end up being, us discriminating against children with disabilities, and I want to make sure that we don't do that. And then that brings me back to just the way that the small groups proposed that matrix was based on your work with the bias incident and hate speech policy in the EISH, and having that, recognizing accountability is important, and so is education, and so is solutions and healing. So not sure if that's something that you want to consider aligning here. And then the last thing, you keep bringing back my memories of being a middle school principal, and it was my favorite time. And no incident is all as simple as a victim and a, and an originator. And so just, I don't know how you could put that in here, but like for me, always just, I struggled so much with the students that were cheering kids on, taking pictures and videos now, posting it now, and working with those two individuals that ended up in this conflict, often there was a lot of influence around. And I think this is a leverage opportunity to acknowledge that it's a community issue, not just two people, and maybe we-
And a community impact as well.
And a community impact, and making sure that those-
You brought it up, you made me think of it when you talked about an upstander, like, everybody has a responsibility in our school community, and it's not typically as simple as two people and a physical altercation.
And to that point, I would offer that in looking at surrounding districts' policies relative to that, recognizing that context matters. You will see in both Sherwood and Westland-Wilsonville's Code of Conduct, that administrators are given the latitude to, to make decisions along a continuum. So that would be for, for consideration, if you want to go down that road or not, as the case may be. Or you are more, you're looking more for a, a hard and fast, you know, type of, type of guidance.
Just to note, in our handbook, we'll have a, a discipline for behavior related to encouraging violence, and one for recording acts of violence and posting on social media.
So we're, sort of, we've moved, it seems like, into the section of the policy that I had outlined as consequences. And I had thought that a good way to start this out was, would be to say, staff and building administrators will use the rubrics listed in the Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook as guidelines for disciplinary action, to determine disciplinary action based on severity and frequency, and some of these other things. And then consider the following as the one, two, three that's listed here. Does that sound pretty good to people?
I think, I'm, I think so, I think that sounds good generally. I just think it's important that, that it is explicit about, you do this, and this is the kind of consequences you can expect, and maybe there's several, and there's a little bit of leeway provided, but generally, it's still one of those, because if it just gives a completely, if it's completely open to interpretation, then we're back to not having consequences that are expected, fair, consistent, and you might as well do nothing. And so I think if it, it should have, but I agree, it should have a range, it should factor in the age of the child. If it's a manifestation of disability, go look at the other policy entirely. But if it's not a manifestation of disability, then here, go here, and this is one of the ones that's going to happen, and if you do it again, then this is what you should expect. I, it's kind of like, you know, if you're a parent and you say, you, you do this, and then you don't do it, then I think we all know that doesn't work, and I don't know why we would think it would work here. So I, I think it has, it needs some leeway, but it also needs to be written down in fair and consistent.
I agree with you on that, but however, as Director Kinch was saying, nothing is, you know, black and white like, like a matrix, right? It's like, you can't say if this happens, then this, if this, then that. There's a lot of interpretation that you have to discern after, and then a whole investigation is done, there's other people that, you know, are involved several times, and so it's, we can't write a policy that is like a book long, right? I mean, so it's got to be broad, it's got to be left to interpretation, and then what is done is then, to mitigate for that bias factor, there's a training that goes involved with what the district does to, to be able to train our administrators so that they are able to recognize where, when their implicit bias or explicit bias comes into play.
Just to follow on, and I, I know we're running out of time, so I'll make this really quick. Just to follow on to what Vice Chair Hymas just said, I, I, that really resonated with me, and I agree with that, that again, it needs to be about the sphere of this over here and the sphere of this over here, knowing that there has to be some latitude, and, which is why I was so very pleased with the work that went into what we looked at last time, because it seemed to be this great mix of providing information that is not so specific that any administrator, teacher, principal, whatever, wouldn't have some say in, in what happened, but also gave a really good idea of the kinds of things that might happen if the kind, if certain kinds of things did happen. And so, to the extent possible, referring back in this policy to that work and having, whatever that document comes out as being when it's fully fleshed out, so that, I mean, A, we can't, we shouldn't outline all of that in policy, but like referring back to that good work that's being done would be, would be my preference.
I agree with that, and I'm wondering now, kind of looking, kind of after this process, and I'll end this quickly, because I know we're over time, maybe we don't have consequences of breaking this policy in this policy? Because it gets into, unless it's a whole lot of may do, because if we, if we go back to the question around that folks had, well, if it's like a push, then the, they will immediately be removing the student, placing the student in a setting where behavior will receive immediate attention, like those are what we would do on that continuum way over here, potentially, or depending if the age of the kiddo. And so maybe, maybe we consider, those aren't the things that we, and I know we grabbed this right from JFCM, and so that was, oh, Dr. McCall.
I was just gonna, as I was reading in, where it says, "Building administrators shall do the following," I noticed three, where it says, "Requiring that students be evaluated by a district-approved licensed mental health professional before allowing the student to return to the classroom setting." And I don't see here where the communication around the family prior to anything.
And so again, all of that was just copy and pasted from that threats of violence policy that we have in JFCM, and so, kind of thinking that some of that might cross over, but I'm wondering, based on our conversation and considerations around really the nuts and bolts needing to be in the handbook and continually referring back to that, if we don't necessarily need to have the consequences listed in policy?
Especially since these consequences are for threats of violence, and so the ORS is all wrong, and the steps are much more severe. However, so the, the language I gave orally earlier was what I thought was sort of more appropriate, it's just a more direct referral to student rights and responsibilities. However, I also started to think that one of the things I had heard from students and parents both was that feedback loop. And so we have in our bias incident complaint procedure, a piece about if the, if, if there is an incident, then the building administrator will make every effort to notify the victim, or if they can't, they'll explain the law that says that they can't. And I was thinking that might be a useful piece to have in here too, so that there is in policy that the loop would be closed whenever possible. Yeah. Does that sound like a good idea?
Yeah.
I'm seeing all of the students nodding. I want to make sure that I see administrators doing the same, and that we're not making it really difficult. Because it is, as you, as, as Director Kinch said, you know, if it's two kids having a, a pushing match in a, in a basketball game, obviously that's not going to be the sort of thing where parents are going to get notified and, and all of that follow-up in the same way as if it's an assault in the hallway. So I want to make sure that we've got, we'll have to polish the language there, I think, a little bit to make it the, whenever possible type of thing.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm thinking we could generally delete the consequences from this because they're pretty far off, and then generally refer to the rights and responsibilities, or the Code of Conduct student handbook. But all, so that, for one thing, I also don't think we'd want, if we define the lower-level type of fences, the, the pushing on the playground type for a couple of first graders, we definitely don't want to, unless Dr. Sue wants a lot of emails, I don't think you want to be notified of every one of those, that would be your whole day. So, but I think what might make sense is a general flavor of the board's direction on what the consequences would be. So not, let's just say, according to severity, with progressive discipline, consistent for everyone, and you will see those things in the handbook, and then we can go into the handbook and look at item by item. Or per the handbook, and kind of use the exact language that they kind of explained that continuum. But I think our general thinking would be appropriate in the policy to provide some guidance as to the, the general principles and thinking behind it.
So it's, I'm getting a really good feel, like I have enough that I think Director Miles and I can go away and make a pretty solid rough draft, and then y'all can say, what were you thinking? We didn't say that, or, no, that's perfect. And then we can do several more iterations of it, but I think we've got enough to make a pretty solid stand at it.
That's great work. All right, anything else for the good of the order, now that we're seven minutes over? All right, so with that, I will adjourn.